That's very much where this begins.
But Rosa Parks, with her straw hats and her church lady clothes and her demure attitude and her maternal aspect, was a far more preferable face to put on this, wasn't she?
Yes, but I think part of why the community galvanizes behind her is also because they know her, they respect her, they see themselves in her, but they also trust, because she's been active for so many years, that she's not going to flinch under the pressure that's going to be brought to bear on anybody who becomes a kind of face of such a movement. So in many ways, part of why they galvanize behind her is she is a good face for the movement. But part of why they galvanize behind her is because of this longer history of kind of political work and political activism.
And part of the reason why she chose to be the face is because she went for training. She didn't just happen to be there that day. I mean, she happened to be there in that she was commuting home from work.
Right.
But she was trained in how to behave in a situation like that.
Right. So five months before she makes this stand on the bus, she goes to Highlander Folk School in Tennessee. And Highlander is an adult kind of organizer training school. It's trying to teach local people how to be leaders of their own movements. And she goes to a two-week workshop. She takes off work to go to this workshop on school desegregation. And it's very much about the kind of power of the individual to go back and lead their own communities. Now, interestingly, on the last day, they do this go-around and they are asked, "What are you going to do when you go back?" And she says, "Well, resistance in Montgomery is too fierce. People are never going to be unified, so there's no movement that's going to--mass movement that's going to emerge. But I'm going to keep working with the young people." Because she's sort of formed a youth chapter of the Montgomery NAACP. So she very much--it's not that hopeful in that moment that there's going to be this mass movement. And yet, five months later, right, December 1st, 1955, again, in her words, "Pushed as far as I could be pushed," sort of doing what I had asked of others, right? So she sees herself in this kind of community of activists. She refuses to give up her strength.
I have to ask you, in putting this book together, you found a lot of things we hadn't seen before, but there's a lot more out there, isn't there?
Absolutely. So part of her papers--she gives part of her papers in the late '70s to the Luther Library at Wayne State. And she refers to this as sort of the first of her papers. But part of her personal papers are still here in an auction house. The probate judge in Detroit gives it to an auction house here in New York to sell. And it's basically been sitting here for five years. And so there's a lot more. No scholar has gotten to see those papers, which, again, I think is very disturbing. I don't think you could sell papers of Martin Luther King, of FDR, you know, of sort of other important 20th century political figures without a scholar assessing the papers, and yet no scholar has gotten to assess her papers. And they are priced, along with her effects, very high, $8 to $10 million. Wow. And so it puts a lot of institutions that she cared about sort of out of the running for those kind of papers.
You say two things in the book, which I think most people would have to stop and think about. One is that the retelling of her life was that it was a romantic fable.
Mm-hmm.
And the other thing you talk about is her death and how it was a ritual of national redemption. What did you mean by those two things?
I mean, she is known for one act, she is celebrated for one act, and I think part of that celebration then puts it all in the past, right? When the actual Rosa Parks keeps working on racial and social justice issues all the way up to the end of her life, right? So she doesn't stop. She believes there's more change. And yet, the way that she's memorialized sort of seeks to kind of end it, to say, "We are a post-racial society," when the actual Rosa Parks did not think we were a post-racial society. And so I use that sort of romantic fable because I think part of how we've come to use her story is a way, as a kind of nation, to make ourselves feel so good about how far we've come, and in many ways, to ignore how far yet we have to go.
Jeanne Theo Harris, the author of "The Rebellious Life of Mrs. Rosa Parks." Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Gwen continued her conversation with biographer Theo Harris. You'll find that and more in Gwen's Take on our homepage.
Again, the major developments of this day. John Brennan, the nominee for CIA director, faced his Senate confirmation hearing. He defended drone strikes overseas, including those targeting Americans. For the first time, the top civilian and military leaders at the Pentagon said they had recommended arming the rebels in Syria. And thousands of police searched across Southern California, Arizona, and Nevada for a one-time Los Angeles police officer wanted in a shooting rampage. They found his burned-out truck near the Big Bear Mountain Ski Resort, 80 miles east of Los Angeles. Never before have two African-Americans served in the U.S. Senate at the same time, until today. That story is online, as Hari Srinivasan explains.
There's a Democrat and a Republican. William Mo Cohen was sworn in today as Massachusetts new senator, taking the seat vacated by Secretary of State John Kerry. He joins South Carolina's Tim Scott, who was appointed in December after Jim DeMitt retired. Learn more about the path of appointed senators. We have a list of those, most recently tapped, and some of their stories. Find that on the rundown. And on Making Sense, economist Bob Lerman proposes a solution to the youth unemployment crisis in the U.S., apprenticeships. All that and more is on our website, newshour.pbs.org. Ray?
And that's the NewsHour for tonight. I'm Ray Suarez.
And I'm Jeffrey Brown. We'll see you online and again here tomorrow evening with Mark Shields and David Brooks, among others. Thanks for joining us. Good night.
Major funding for the PBS NewsHour has been provided by BNSF Railway.
The William and Flora Hewlett Foundation, working to solve social and environmental problems at home and around the world.
And with the ongoing support of these institutions and foundations. And...
This program was made possible by the Corporation for Public Broadcasting. And by contributions to your PBS station from viewers like you. Thank you.
KQED thanks our members and community partners for their support.
Readers of the San Francisco Chronicle get journalism backed by a century and a half of experience. Chronicle writers, columnists, and photographers provide in-depth reporting for Bay Area residents. More information is available at sfgate.com/special. From John Newmeyer, creator of San Francisco Ballet's The Little Mermaid, comes Homburg Ballet and the dance theater epic, Nijinsky, February 13 through 19 online. Learn more about Nijinsky at sfballet.org.
They were the most wanted men of the Third Reich, notorious Nazi war criminals who were complicit in Hitler's atrocities.
If he wanted us dead, we would be dead.
It's a series that uncovers the dramatic pursuit of infamous Nazi fugitives in chases leading around the globe.
South America, you could make your way by bribing everybody.
The incredible true stories of the Nazi hunters.
Four back-to-back episodes, tonight at 8:00.
The idea of the Freedom Riders is challenging segregation so frontally and so oppressively.
We have past fear. If one person falls, others take their place.
If I asked God to be with me, to give me the strength I would need to remain non-violent.
We knew that we had taken a stand and that it was going to be better.
Freedom Riders, an American experience film.
Monday night at 10:00 on KQED. KQED celebrates Black History Month with programs that share the African-American experience. For a guide to our related programming and community resources, visit our website, kqed.org/heritage. And tune in for our Black History Month celebration, coming Sunday, February 17 at 7:00 p.m.
February 7, meeting of the Capitola Planning Commission to Order. May I have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Graves?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Chairperson Ruth?
Here. Will everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The meeting tonight is being broadcast live on Charter Communications Cable TV Channel 8. It's recorded and replayed at 12:00 noon on the following Saturday. And that would be on Community Television of Santa Cruz County, Charter Channel 71, or Comcast Channel 25. The meetings can also be viewed on the city's website. Our technician tonight is Victor Herman. And as a reminder, please turn off your cellphones during the meeting. And if you come up to the podium to speak, if you could kindly sign your name, so we have a record for the minutes, okay? Before we begin the meeting tonight, we had a gentleman pass away here this week named Jim Maxwell. Jim played an important role in the city many years ago, and actually, just recently, as a member of the Wharf to Wharf Board of Directors. Jim and Ron and I were members of the Joint Powers Authority, a group of school district officials and city officials. And this is back in the days when we got along with the school district very well. And that group was instrumental in starting the city recreation program, the community school program, actually building the gymnasium. And Jim played a very important role in that. So I'd like to have a moment of silence in respect for Jim. Okay. We'll move on. Are there any oral communications from--oh, wait, additions and deletions? Any additions or deletions?
No.
Any oral communications from members of the commission? None? Any oral communications from members of the public? This would be for items not on the regularly scheduled agenda, items that are not on the agenda, okay? Seen no one. We'll move to--no staff comments?
None tonight.
Okay. Approval of the minutes. Any additions or corrections, deletions to the minutes?
I'll move the minutes.
I'll second.
A motion to second to approve the minutes is submitted. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item four is the consent calendar, and we have one item tonight at 4570 Garnet Street. It's a design permit and a remodel. I live within 500 feet of this particular parcel, and so I have to recuse myself from participating in it. But as you can see, that would only leave two members up here, which is not a quorum. So under the Brown Act, in situations like this, I'm allowed to participate. So I will be participating in this item. So item 4A, consent calendar, would...
I'd like to make a couple of comments, not pull it from the consent. I do believe that we did have two additional items on the agenda tonight, or for the agenda tonight. I received at my place here tonight two emails, and also received them at my home, at my computer there, relative to 4570 Garnet Street. One of them was from a Ron Burke, and the other one was from a David Ramos. And I'm sure all of you got those. And I think it's important to note, when we get these things, that there are additions after the late--after the cutoff date for the agenda item. I want to make one comment, and this, again, is dealing with this application, and that is that it's, again, has a deck. This deck does not bother me. I have no problem with this application. But we need to somehow get together with the council and get a definitive feeling on how they feel on decks, because you know, Ms. Ruth, and I know, over the years, decks that look into other people's private space were never allowed in the city. These decks that are--seem to occurring now are overlooking streets, and I don't have problems with it. And I think we could really do ourselves a favor when we write the new zoning rules for the different areas under the new general plan, to really have this discussion before then.
Yeah. It definitely needs to be clarified. You have any comments, Linda, at all? Is there anyone in the audience that would wish to discuss this item? Seen no one, we'll bring it back to the council for a decision. Is there a motion?
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
You have a motion to second to approve the consent calendar, which is 4570 Garnet Street, a remodel. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Hey, that brings us to item five, public hearings. The procedure for the public hearing is the staff will do a presentation. There's public discussion. The planning commission will make comments and ask questions. We'll close the public portion of the hearing, and the planning commission will discuss and reach a decision. So the first item is 1855 41st Avenue, a design permit to construct a new exterior entry and facade, including a sign permit for a new wall sign as part of an existing retail space at Capitola Mall. Ryan?
Yes, good evening, commissioners. As you mentioned, this is a design permit for a new exterior entry and facade, also including a wall sign and some new landscaping and improvements at the mall. Just to give you an idea of where it's located, it basically is on the east side of the mall, facing 41st Avenue, basically near the main, or at the end of the main entrance to the mall there off of 41st Avenue, at the end of that main driveway. Here's another closer look at kind of the improvement area that we're talking about between the Coles Building and Chili's near the entrance to the mall. And here's a--here's taking a look at what's currently there today. As you can see, it basically consists of a blank exterior wall, landscape planner that provides screening for a service yard. There's an electrical transformer and such back there, as well as a sidewalk with lighting and some mature trees. So as part of this, including the removal of the landscape planner, there are going to be six--there are six trees that are going to be removed, in addition to two trees where the main entrance, you'll see, is going to be. So the applicant is--to meet our requirement for tree removal, they're going to be replacing at a two-to-one ratio. So there'll be 16 trees planted throughout the mall area. And they've actually indicated some locations that's included in your plan. So here is the new facade rendering. As I mentioned in my staff report, there are some minor changes. This was a facade rendering that was kind of done early on, and so there are some changes in terms of the landscape planner and some of those things. But in general, in terms of the actual elevation itself of the building, this is generally what it's going to look like. So what they're basically doing in terms of, just to give you a list of some of the improvements that are going on here, so they're basically opening this blank wall of the exterior of the mall to incorporate a new retail storefront. It's Ulta Beauty, which is a retail store. They're going to be removing the existing landscape planner that we just saw in the previous photo, and reconfiguring the area to incorporate this new storefront. Still maintain a screen wall, nine-foot screen wall to enclose this service area that basically houses trash, recycling, and an electrical transformer. There's new raised planters with seating walls, with all-new landscaping, new lighting, and a new wall sign, as you can see there on the elevation. This new storefront facade is going to include a new decorative corners, smooth cement, plaster finish, cultured stone base, aluminum windows and door entry. You can see the orange awning and wall sconces. Here's a look kind of at a site plan, showing the new entry. So you can see, here's where the new CMU wall will be to screen this service area. Here's the electrical transformer. This is all-new planting, all-new landscaping, and a raised planter wall. And then here's the new entry to the store. This is the--as part of--they're requesting a sign permit. So the sign ordinance requires that the size of the wall sign be no greater than one square foot of--one square foot of sign area for each foot of lineal business frontage. In this case, there's 82 feet of business frontage, and they're proposing an 80-square-foot sign. So it does fall within the requirements of the sign requirements. The signs basically consist of individual, verse, channel, halo-lit letters. So staff really feels this is a big improvement for the mall. It's really nice to kind of bring, you know, the mall to the outside. And so it's kind of created--this is kind of a dead zone right now. So I think it's going to be really nice to create an attractive storefront on the outside of the mall. So staff is recommending approval, subject to the conditions and findings that we provided in the staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
Okay. Ron?
Yes, in the background of your report, you mentioned that Mark Wheeler had some concerns, you had some concerns, Venna Alstine had some concerns, and Susan had some concerns, our landscape architect on the Art and Site Committee. Have all those concerns been met?
Yes.
I couldn't figure out if they had or had not. The one that really bothered me was the ADA one, so...
That has been resolved, yeah. There was some discussion. There was a couple of different design ideas. At first, they were thinking about having steps going up to the main entry, and then having kind of a ramp along the side, and then come across. And they basically have ramped--there are no more steps, so it's basically going to be ADA compliant.
It'll be a rise.
Yes.
Any other questions, Ron?
No.
Linda, you have none?
No.
Is the applicant present? You have any comments to make?
Unless you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on this item? Seen no one, then we'll bring it back to the planning commission. Any discussion?
I'd just like to say that I agree with staff. I think it's a gorgeous design, and I think it'll really open up that area of the mall. So I'm definitely in support of it.
Just a quick unrelated question. I heard the mall's for sale. Is that true?
I've heard that rumor off and on for the last year, so...
Okay. Okay. I'll move the application.
I'll second.
With the findings.
Okay, we have a motion to second to approve the application with the findings and conditions. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Got your permit. Thank you.
Good night. Thanks, Ron.
Yep, thank you. Hey, item B is an application for a design permit, an amendment to a conditional use permit to allow for additional outdoor seating for an approved restaurant in the ARCN District at 17718 Capitola Avenue. Ryan?
Yes, the applicant is requesting an amendment to a previously approved takeout restaurant. It's currently under construction at 1718--or 718 Capitola Avenue, sorry. If this looks a little bit familiar, it's because the applicant's been here a couple times for a couple--you know, first for the approval, and then for an amendment, and now we have another amendment here. So just to give a little background, back September 2, 2010, the planning commission originally approved this takeout restaurant concept. There was a limitation to six seats. There was a small outdoor seating area. The applicant returned after having to go through, you know, meeting with the health department and kind of realizing that they were going to need some more storage and a bathroom, what have you. So going through that process, they got approvals for a 95-square-foot addition to the building, and also to amend the use permit to allow for the sale of beer and wine. So if you're familiar with the location, this is the property, and this is the specific-- this is the restaurant location, and this is kind of the area of outdoor seating and the area that we're talking about tonight. So the proposed amendment that we're discussing tonight is basically taking it from a designation as a takeout restaurant to a standard restaurant, thereby eliminating the six-seat limitation, expanding the outdoor seating area, incorporating some new landscaping, and then also some parking space, restriping to include a handicap space and walkway access to it. So basically, some exterior improvements to the location. So when I talk about takeout restaurant designation to a standard restaurant designation, really that has to do with parking and seating. In our zoning code, essentially, a takeout restaurant has a similar parking requirement as retail or office. And so--but there's also a limitation on seating, and you're only allowed to have six seats. When it's a standard restaurant, it's a much higher parking requirement. It's one per 60. And so a lot of times, it's difficult to convert from retail or office to restaurant because of that situation. Here, what we did is we took a look at the parking for that site, and surprisingly, the site is actually overparked by quite a bit. If you take a look just at this chart here, the existing site actually has 45 off-street parking spaces. And with this proposed restaurant and the increase in parking at the one per 60 to allow more seating, only 32 would be required. So there's actually even more parking. So the request to go from a takeout restaurant to a restaurant would be permitted in terms of parking. So here's a take a look at the kind of the area that we're looking at here as the site plan. We have the restaurant. It's a really small restaurant. Here's the outdoor seating area that's being proposed. Has previously been two parking spaces that were kind of awkward that came off of the street, so you're backing out into the street. So actually, that's probably a good situation to get rid of those parking spaces. A landscape area, and then here's a new handicap space that will have direct access to the restaurant. The seating area, it's about 18 by 20 feet, and then there's, as it showed, there's a five-foot sidewalk, or five-foot walkway area. Here's kind of a street elevation that shows that they're looking to incorporate a three-foot broad iron fence along the edge of the seating area to basically separate it from the public sidewalk area. All-new landscaping is proposed around that seating area, including, you can see, there's a water fountain proposed. The landscaping, they're looking to go for kind of a tropical feel, so landscaping's going to consist of some queen palms, elephant ear plants, bromelains. So it's kind of going for that tropical theme. Here's a look at kind of what it looks like now. The applicant--I won't go into a long discussion, but basically, the applicant has been moving forward with some of the work. And you can see, it's a--here's kind of what the patio is going to look like. It's kind of the beginning stages, and it's kind of a terracotta look, so it has a nice Here's another look at how it's looking now. There's the landscape area that's going to be improved. Also, on the patio area, the applicant's proposing a palapa, just a large, I guess, basically be for shading. A--it's about 14 feet in diameter, about 12 feet in height, and it's, as you can see, it's kind of a pre-woven thatch, so again, adding to that tropical feel that he's going for. So based on looking at all of the zoning code requirements, and he's meeting the requirement to obviously go from a takeout restaurant to a restaurant, meeting all the parking requirements, staff doesn't have any issues with the application and can recommend approval.
Okay. Any questions for staff?
Yes, it's not a question, really, but it would have been nice to have had a layout of the parking on the site so that we could see it, because you mentioned in the staff report, there's an office, there's a detail shop, plus this. You don't mention the bridge club that's on the same property, and I'm wondering if that was calculated into the parking.
They're gone.
They're gone now?
Yes.
Okay. So is that a vacant building, and is this was parking considered for that?
Yeah, I basically, it fell under the office use. So the 3,600 is counts that building.
Okay.
So it has been included.
But it would be nice to see a parking plan on these applications.
Okay.
Linda?
I only have one question for clarification. It's just clarification. The--on the plans, it says the proposed expansion of the building, that was already approved, right? They're not expanding the building any more than it's already been.
No, it's already done, yeah.
I thought so. Thank you.
Typically, takeout restaurants, you busch your own tables, and I don't see any kind of built-in decorative trash receptacles out here for that. And I'm wondering what kind of idea the applicant has for trash.
This is sexual.
Could you come up to the podium, please?
Annie, if you want to come up and speak, yeah.
Hello, my name is Manuel Monjaras. And, okay, so basically, on the back, there's a section where I'm going to have a section for the garbage, like right--somewhere right there. Yeah, right there.
You see, people, you're not going to be bussing those tables when people get up and leave and leave their... leave and leave their trash behind where they've eaten lunch.
Right.
And if you don't have a trash receptacle out there for them, putting it in, the wind's going to blow it around and pretty soon.
You mean outside?
Yeah.
No, I am going to have one.
You have a decorative one?
Yeah, right on the patio.
A decorative one or rather than a garbage can?
Right, exactly, yes.
Okay, because that's not shown anywhere on the plan.
Yeah, and, well, there's also going to be another one on the inside.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think anybody's going to walk from that outside seating area to the inside to throw their trash away.
No, I think we were talking where I was going to keep the garbage, like the, no. I am going to have a place where they're going to discard the garbage.
Okay, maybe we could add that as a condition, that some sort of decorative trash receptacle be provided in the outdoor seating area?
Okay.
While you're up there, you have a beer and wine permit, would?
I haven't got it yet, but I got the permission from the city yet. I still have to go to, I think it's in Salinas, and apply for.
I'm always concerned with, usually the reason for the fencing from the public right-of-way is because of licenses like that. You don't know what type of license that you're going to be applying for?
I guess just beer and wine, I don't know, is it?
And has the city researched, is there any requirement for separation from the public right-of-way with regards to outside licenses like that?
Generally, there are. I mean, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I know that he was approved for only beer and wine, and so that's, he would need to get the ABC license that fell within that realm. And I, you know, from past experience, there generally does require a separation from the public way if you're going to be having alcohol out in an outdoor area. So, but that would be an ABC requirement, is my understanding.
Any questions for the applicant? Anything you'd like to add, Mr. Res?
No, I mean, I'm, I'm just, just like to see what you guys think.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on this item? See, no one will close the public portion, bring it back to the council for discussion and decision. Any comments, Linda?
I think that the beautification is quite nice in that area, and I would hope that it would be a successful little restaurant.
Okay. Ron?
I'm willing to give it a try. I just want to make sure that in the future, when we have these applications, that we really do have the amount of parking that's necessary for the uses that would be allowed, especially with a vacant building that's one of the larger buildings on the site.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Conditions.
With an additional condition for a trash receptacle?
And just to clarify, that's a decorative trash receptacle on the outside?
Right.
In the patio area?
In the proximity of the outdoor seating.
So people can, okay.
Yeah, not just a trash barrel.
And that, because the plans do not show for a garbage collection area for the restaurant itself, make sure that that's one of the conditions also.
Okay.
Okay, then we have a motion and a second. All in favor of the application?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
That brings us to item C, 504 Beulah Drive. This is a coastal development permit, art and site review and conditional use permit to locate a modular building in the MHE Zone District to be used for police storage and the code enforcement office.
Mr. Chairman, I also have the same problem you have. I have to recuse myself on this item because I live within 500 feet. However, in order to have a quorum, I get to sit in on the item.
Okay.
Parking.
Ready, Ryan? Susan, whoever?
Yes, good evening. As long as you ignore the first paragraph of the staff report, we're fine.
About the brown market ranch?
It's what happens when you use old templates. In 2009, the planning commission and city council approved removing the existing house at 404 Beulah and a large cypress tree, and approved installing a modular building that was going to be used for parking enforcement, code enforcement, IT and storage. And at that time, the city didn't go forward with the project because of financial reasons. Since then, we have closed the Pacific Cove Mobile Home Park, and as part of that closure, the city has purchased a number of those homes. And there was quite a nice one that used to occupy Space 57. And the city is proposing now to move that modular building to this location. And again, the modular building will be remodeled both inside and out to fit on the site. You have a plan up there of where the building's going to be located. The city manager did take the plans to the one neighbor who is adjacent to the property, and she had no objections to the site plan or the location of the building there. Keep going. The plan will include adding a new ADA walkway into the front of the building as well as a covering for that area to be used for the code enforcement people. And this is just an interior plan of how the building will be used by the police department. Here's an elevation. The bottom one is how it will look from the new driveway going into the temporary parking lot. The middle elevation is looking at it from the temporary parking lot itself. You can see from the top that very little of the building's actually visible from Beulah itself. I think there's one more. There is some discussion about putting a, we might have a temporary shuttle bus parking stop in front of this building. That's the rectangle area that's over on the left-hand side, but that will depend on the final design for the temporary parking lot. And so that is basically the layout. Our police chief is here tonight. If you have any questions about the operation of the building, the big advantage for the community and for the people here at City Hall is that having this building in place will allow us to free up what's commonly referred to as the community room, which will provide an extra conference room and meeting space for the city functions to take place. Since we have not completely finalized the parking lot design plan, there is a condition in here which allows the building, the siding of the building to be adjusted up to 10 feet closer to Beulah Street itself. But in talking to the Public Works Director, this looks pretty much like the exact location it will ultimately be in.
Okay. And the resident you were talking about, they had no objections to?
They have no objections to it. In fact, this plan provides a larger setback from her residence than the plan that had previously been approved in 2009.
So if it's moved back towards Beulah, would you have to cut into the slope then?
No, the 10 feet allows you, the way the slope is, there's, it's actually about eight and a half feet that you have without cutting into the slope.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, I didn't plan to speak to this item, but seems to be no public improvements on the Beulah side. I'm thinking of at least a curb and gutter that would match up with the adjacent neighbor, the Sullivan's, that were required to have such. And it seems that if the city's really desires, one of the things, one of the things that caused the demise of the old house that was there was the runoff coming down Beulah was directed into this location. And it might behoove the city to look through Public Works at having at least a curb and gutter there to take care of stormwater.
Yeah, we can certainly discuss that with Public Works Director.
Okay, Linda?
No comment.
No comments. Chief, you have any comments to add to this?
Unless you have a question.
Okay. And?
Actually, do have one comment.
Okay, Linda?
And that is that getting the community room back for community use will be, the pent-up demand is
I know.
Very, very big.
All right.
I'd like to make one other comment before we ask the public, and that is that I'm actually happy to see that this is a modular mobile home that's going in there opposed to a storage building of some type. Most of the people in the community know that I felt that because of the zoning on the property for years, that even though the house did exist there, that I thought the best use would be a temporary building of this type. So I'm very happy with what's going to transpire.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak to this item? You're the only one that has a chance. Hey, see, no one will close the public portion, bring it back to the council.
I'll move approval for this item.
Would you accept a friendly amendment to have a condition in there that staff look at stormwater runoff and a curb and gutter on the Beulah side of the project?
Yes.
Okay, I'll second.
Okay, then we have a motion and a second with the additional condition. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chair votes aye also. Okay, got your spot there, Rudy.
Yeah, it will be a nice addition for everyone.
Yeah. Little nice, it's like Linda said, it'll be good to get that community room open again. Directors' report? Any reports?
You have the report?
Well, I guess I should announce that I've accepted a position with the city of Santa Cruz, so this is actually going to be my last planning commission meeting.
Oh, didn't you work there once before?
No.
No?
You worked in Las Gadas before.
Was it Las Gadas?
Yeah, Las Gadas before.
Well, congratulations, Ryan.
Thank you. Thank you.
So now we have two positions to fill, so you'll be staying around a little longer?
No, 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 no.
Rudy's going to jump in.
Rudy's going to jump in and help us out.
He has lots of free time. Now, we're scheduled for the community development director interviews on the 19th of this month.
Well, I'd just like to say it's been a pleasure working with you and congratulations, but you will be missed.
Thank you. I was going to say the same. It's been great working with you guys, so thank you.
You've been here a long time.
Mm-hmm.
Been a while, yeah.
Especially when compared to community development directors.
That's right. I think Ryan's worked for eight community development directors during his tenure here.
There's been eight.
Eight?
And next month would be 10 years.
Wow.
Yeah, so a little under 10 years.
Hopefully, the city will do a little better in the future of
Yeah, retaining.
Having some continuity in that position.
Yes.
Well, good luck, Ryan.
Thank you.
In your new position. Okay, that brings us to commission communications. Any? Ron?
I discussed earlier that I was concerned, I received a report that grease was flowing behind Whole Foods, and I will tomorrow attempt to contact County Health and the sanitation district. I believe Stephanie's are represented on sanitation district because my understanding is that all grease traps and stuff were to be underground because they made every restaurant and food place in the city do that in the village. So I was surprised to see an above-ground grease facility out there.
Yeah. Well, it may not even have come to light at the sanitation district that they require a grease trap in.
Maybe not. I don't want to sound like I'm being the bad guy, but it was reported to me, and I feel it's my responsibility as, you know, public servant to bring it to the proper people.
Are we still doing the sandwich board enforcement? Legal sign enforcement?
Uh, we
Holler store and HR block on Capitola Road.
Right. Actually, I talked to Brian today. He's actually been a bit ill, and we have a whole list of signs, a number of them are the Grady's.
You could go with liberty tax and a whole bunch of them.
Okay. Well, if there's no other communications in, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.
That's kind of good.
Go there with my family, and they know us, we walk in, and they're always like, oh, you're back, you're here, come sit down.
So what do you get when you go there? I can see, you know?
We do have our favorites. We always get the pan-fried noodles. They're just so tasty that I will mix them up with the rice so they last longer. And they come with really crunchy scallions and prawns and scrambled eggs.